Call to order. Meeting for January twenty four, twenty twenty three. Please rise for the. National.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To repose upon which stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity of God as well.
National. Getting everybody. I go to public comment on this one. Public comment at six thirty is what you said.
Mister Mayor, if we can jump right into the. The first item and that will, we should take just generalized public comment, I believe.
Yeah, that's not directed that way, but just want to make sure. We'll open up for a public comment. And we'll be having public comment after the words after this as well. Okay, I'll close public public comment and we'll go into new business. Item number two on your agenda. Uh, the city manager of planning department, money director, agenda title request for deferral of fire sprinkler building requirement. For two oh two and two for Turi Street. So that's his personal number oh six, one, two, seven, two, when he zero, when he zero. The city manager has received a request for deferred for deferral from Robert O'Gorman contractor. For reconstruction of two oh two and two oh four Turi Street due to fire damage that occurred in October of twenty twenty one. Definitely request deferral or an exemption. To implement California Building Code and California Fire Code, Section nine oh three automatic sprinkler system. City Council will consider a number of options. Related to this request.
All right, thank you. Um, and so the city attorney is on as well and uh did also assist in the staff report. So uh Dawn. Uh, you can jump in whenever you would like. Um, we did not have the staff report in the agenda packet, so we have provided copies for everyone and I will read through that quickly for you. Um, and then open it to the city attorney and city manager. So the city of Wairega received a request for deferral from Rob O'Gorman, a building contractor on behalf of property owners, Steve and Cheryl Matthews, to issue an occupancy permit for two oh two and two oh four Turi Street. Without complying with state building code requirement, which requires the installation of an automatic fire sprinkler system. This building was destroyed by fire, a fire which resulted in the loss of life. This is a rental unit that under present law could be used as a childcare center. No doubt, the request is based on the fact that there is some expense associated with the cost of materials and installation of the sprinkler system. Section eleven point zero, one point zero, seven, zero of the Wairega Municipal Code provides no building permit shall be issued unless and until the building official. Is satisfied that the construction authorized by the permit will not violate any existing law or ordinance. The California Building and Fire Code is in place to ensure health, safety and welfare of the community. In twenty seventeen Senate Bill ten sixty nine became operative, requiring the installation of automatic fire sprinkler systems in one and two family dwelling units. Title twenty four, part nine, section nine oh one point four requires that fire protection and life safety system shall be installed. In accordance with the built California Building Code. Section nine oh one point five point one provides it shall be unlawful to occupy any portion of a building or structure until the required fire protection and life safety systems have been tested and approved. The issue before the council is the owner's request that an occupancy permit be issued without compliance with the twenty nineteen California Building and Fire Code, Section nine oh three. Automatic sprinkler system. The requirement for fire sprinkler suppressions uh system extends to even inhabitable garage spaces. Even when former codes made installation optional, any decision not to have residential fire sprinklers installed could be considered as negligence and a deliberate indifference towards property and life. Nevertheless, on behalf of the property owner's request that the city defer the requirement to install a fire suppression system. In the reconstructed duplex, therefore, we have brought it here today. Um, it is not within my propensity as a planning director or within uh the ability of the building inspector to supersede state code. Um, which is why it has been brought to a public forum. Senate Bill one oh nine takes precedent over local regulations or ordinances. In other words, the city council lacks the discretion to grant the owner's request at this time. The structure at two oh two and two oh four Turi Street is a side by side duplex that was severely damaged in a fire in October twenty twenty one. The damage was severe enough that a majority of the structure was reconstructed to two thousand and nineteen building code standards. This reconstruction, including new plumbing, electrical, structural, foundation and framing work. The level of reconstruction is considered like new construction and make a make made applicable to the twenty nineteen. Building and Fire Code Standards, which includes fire sprinkler requirements. And the initial building permit period was received between November twenty one and March of twenty two, when the city staff and planning and building were transitioning, which resulted in the city approving plans. Um, that did not explicitly talk about the fire sprinkler requirement. So this omission does not mean the city has the authority to grant the contractor's request, but it is something that we have strived to correct with other uh building applications. So at this time, we do require that building applications have a pre-application meeting for any construction. So whether it be reconstructing a garage. Or reconstructing or even new development. We require basically an all hands on deck pre-application meeting. There's a request form that we're working on now. Um, but we do that via telephone and email to set those up. Uh, that may also include Caltrans and other entities that may need to be a decision maker viewer in the process. So at the time of those pre-application meetings now, we do explicitly less list whether those requirements are there or not, or address any questions that may come from the applicant or their representatives. In addition to that, we are reinstituting a stamping policy on all building plans that include public works, fire, planning. Um, along with the building department signature on all plans to ensure that everyone has reviewed the final plans for. That direction, right? Uh, previously to this standard, uh, we were just relying on the plan checker and building department for those. Requirements. So going down to staff recommendations, since the city council of the city of Wairega lacks the legal authority to contravene the. California Building and Fire Codes and its associated regulations, staff recommends that the owner's request to defer the installation. Of an automatic fire sprinkler system prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit be rejected as required by state law, and I'll hand it over to Jason and Dawn.
Thank you, Juliana.
Thank you, Ms. Lucchese, and uh thank you, Mister Mayor and Wairega City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. And before I get started, I just want to um. Point out uh that I have a lot of respect for Rob O'Gorman, and when I was at the county. I remember having to do a project and Mister O'Gorman came in and really walked me through the requirements of that project. I know he did a lot of fabulous work. Around Siskiyou County, um, but ultimately. Uh, whatever transpires here tonight, um, I think the mutual respect hopefully stays intact because I am here to argue on behalf of the city. Against Mister O'Gorman, which I will proceed to do now. So as you may or may not be aware, in October of twenty twenty one, a structure fire occurred at the property we are discussing this evening. And a young child died in this structure fire. A horrendous loss that is difficult to fathom. As a spectator working for the county at the time and living here in Wairega. I naively would have assumed that after the loss of life in a residential structure fire, it would be common for the contractor to install fire sprinklers. When they rebuild, regardless of the severity of the fire. In this instance, we are talking about a rebuild to like new. Because one of the duplexes was gone down to the foundation and the other was left with just three walls. No trusses. And no windows. And the title from the engineer on this project is a fire damage duplex. Rebuild project. So when Mister O'Gorman came in earlier this month to argue against needing to do fire sprinklers. On this project. In claiming he had no idea he was required to install one. As I would uh to install one, I was a bit miffed. And ultimately felt it important to get him an audience with the council as he seemed so adamant that he should not be required. Because he claims the building official never told him he had to on the multiple inspections throughout this process. Our building official has a different story and claims to have told members of Mister O'Gorman's team on two separate occasions. But this is a he said, she said argument that you will see is not important based on the facts that I am about to present to you this evening. An important caveat to this story is that in twenty sixteen, the California Building Code was updated, requiring fire sprinkler systems. So first, on page one of the plan set submitted by the engineer and approved by the city of Wairega. It clearly states the following. Under design information for the required city of Wairega. Design criteria. Twenty nineteen additions of the California Building Code. California Plumbing Code. California Mechanical Code. California Electrical Code. California Fire Code. And California Health and Safety Code Amendments. And goes on to list the project will be following the twenty nineteen. California Energy Efficiency Standards. And the twenty nineteen California Building Standards. So bear with me. This is materially important, in my opinion, as we are all agreeing that the twenty nineteen Building Code and subsequent codes listed. Will be followed on this project. Which includes the fire and sprinkler requirements for new and in this instance, like new construction. Secondly, the project engineer on this project are not qualified. To design fire sprinkler systems. This is very important that we all understand that. In this instance, and in most all instances, we get building plan sets. They do not have fire sprinkler because only. A uh small subset of qualified engineering firms. Do fire sprinkler, and so I will show you that here momentarily. And we have approved there and other engineering firms' plans for similar projects without the fire sprinkler design, as we know it is coming at a later date. On this plan set and on other plan sets from this engineering firm, when fire sprinkler is required. Furbage in the notes section make. Two clear statements, which I will discuss now. On page two of six of the plan set, a list of general requirements in notes. Section has twenty five items listed. Item thirteen states. Provide pipe insulation for freeze protection of fire sprinkler riser run. Installed in unconditioned space. Item fourteen states sprinkler pipes installed in unheated spaces to be protected from freezing. I'm now going to show you those statements. So just as with prior submitted plans when fire sprinkler will be completed. These items are in the note section and certainly infer that we expect a fire sprinkler system design. To be submitted and we expect it to be installed. Now Mister O'Gorman will point to item twenty five on this page, and I will bring that around to you shortly. And that states. Fire sprinklers to be designed by others. This also is obvious to city staff that the contractor will be installing fire sprinklers. But the caveat Mister O'Gorman will point to here is that in the brackets after this statement, it says. None this project. Staff interpretation of this is that the engineer is stating they will not design the fire sprinkler on this project. Mister O'Gorman believes that these three words infer that no fire sprinkler is needed on this project. I contest this statement. Pardon me. Because the engineer uh is that the engineer will not be designing them on this project that they have submitted because they are not qualified to do so. Not that they are not required for the building. And just as we receive all fire sprinkler plans separate from building plans due to the specialization. Uh, just as here. This is a separate fire sprinkler plan from. Stanky and Sons Fire Protect Protection. They're certified to do this type of plan. The engineer on this particular plan set is not qualified to do fire sprinkler plan, so we would not expect them to come on their plan set, if that makes sense. So I'm going to now show you uh number twenty five, which is, I think, the crux of Mister O'Gorman's argument. And I'm also going to show you from the same engineering firm. What the notes say when they are not going to do fire sprinkler. So. The small piece of paper that I'm going to show you is not from this project. It is from another project when we know they're not doing fire sprinkler. And so as I said, I'm just going to read out here the general notes from the same engineering firm on other similar projects state number four. No fire sprinklers existing or proposed. This is from another project. This is not this project. I contest that this information is not supplied on that plan, plan set. All right, thank you. So if we are to remove all the facts showing the twenty nineteen Building Code would be followed. And the facts uh about note thirteen and fourteen on page two discussing fire sprinkler locations and requirements. We are left with three words that show up on no other plans we have from the same engineering firm or other engineering firms. When fire sprinkler are not going to be installed. What we receive from this engineering firm when fire sprinkler will not be installed on a plan set states very clearly in the notes section, as I just showed you. No fire sprinklers existing or proposed, which is not. On the plan set submitted for Mister O'Gorman's project. Finally. Even if for some reason, this council was not satisfied with the plethora of data supporting the city stance that this project requires a fire sprinkler system. Even if we overlook the notes on page two that discuss the placement and conditioning of the space required for fire sprinkler and to make sure they are protected from freezing. Even if this council rejects page one of this plan set that clearly states the twenty nineteen built government building, fire, electrical, plumbing codes, et cetera, will be followed. Even if the council disagrees that after a building is burned to the ground and a child loses their life and we should somehow not require a fire sprinkler system. If any of what I am painting is at all plausible. Then the plan set is stamped and approved with the following language from the city. Formal approval of these plans does not relieve the designer. Or builder of his responsibility of compliance with state and local laws. That statement places the responsibility of compliance on the designer builder. But as you can see from the evidence before you today, the contractor should have known that fire sprinkler were required for this project, not only based on the circumstance of the loss of life in the fire that led to this rebuild. But ultimately because it is referenced. In his plan set that he submitted and the city approved. I will now show you that stamp. And then cede my time to uh Mister O'Gorman. So Mister Mayor, I think it would be appropriate if we can hear from Mister O'Gorman and then take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Mister O'Gorman? You're up.
Hi, Mister Mayor. How are you, everybody?
Good evening.
That's a pretty good argument. Yeah, I gotta give Jason. He's done his homework. Um, I don't argue anything about the codes. I I I'm assuming everybody here has been through a building project. Um, I've been a builder for almost thirty years in the city of Wairega and on a on the building plans. Um, there's a lot of general notes that may not apply to your project. Uh, so of course, as you know, Jason had mentioned, I mean, there's a lot of city codes and things on there that um. We may have to follow, but typically whenever this comes about on a set of plans, the city usually or the the governing authority that's approving the plans usually makes. Clear and certain that those things are required for that specific project. Um, the so when I read here on line twenty two that. No fire sprinklers required, none required this project, as Jason had showed you. I even called the engineer and he even told me, no, they're not required. So I guess I have a couple of questions for the city or whoever the governing authority is. Um. I have a copy of our building card here and. I must, in my experience, it's safe to say that even though our, all of our inspections lists are on there, they may not necessarily be required for that project, correct? Okay, so when I see on my plans and it says none this project and I ask my engineer and. I'm not going to say I asked the city. When I picked up. I filed for the permit and picked up the permit. I was, my plans have never marked anything different while letting me know that I may be needing those sprinkler systems. That's all and and I'm not arguing the state codes. And my argument here is. I have gone through multiple inspections and not until I inquired for additional literature from the city. To back up my justifications for further damages and code upgrades that summer on the plans. Did I ever get the impression that I was going to need fire sprinklers? If I had needed them from the start, I wouldn't be here tonight. If I was aware of that. There's this, I think. Dwayne and some of you know me well enough. If it's there, I'm going to build it that way. So I also know that in other governing authorities, is it not? The city's responsibility to make it clear and not let these out of the office without them being ready to build. So my question is, is. If I pick up a permit and the stamp on here says. Approved by the city. Then this is all I have. Then how am I to know what else I'm supposed to add to that? If a fire sprinkler suppression system is designed or needs to be in this project, this plan should not have gone out the office door.
I can respond to that if you like, Mister O'Gorman. Ultimately, at the moment, I believe the overwhelming consensus and the council can correct us if they'd like to change course here is that. There's a limited number of uh engineering firms that do fire sprinkler and ultimately. In the majority of cases, we get a plan set from somebody who doesn't, that's just doing building. And we allow you to move forward because we don't want to halt you from getting. The two or three companies that you know, we could normally get to do fire sprinkler that may take an extra three months and. When you're going to go ahead and lay a foundation or do do framing before you ever get to fire sprinkler, it seems to be in the best interest in developer friendly. To allow developers to move forward as we wait for fire sprinkler. And I guess I would contest that your own plan set. First of all, is an engineered plan set. It's not the city's. The city approved it and items thirteen and fourteen clearly state that it's very much inferred that you're going to do. Fire sprinkler. And so I guess that's kind of the backbone of my argument is that your own plans that that you submitted to us and we approved. States clearly to me that you're going to do fire sprinkler. So. We were anticipating receiving, as we do with other projects, a secondary set of plans. From a qualified fire. Suppression engineering outfit um that would fold right into your project.
You know, that I I have no argument against against that as far as deferred. I was never informed that we would, we had a deferral on fire sprinklers period. No one, and for me, if this plan is not complete and it needs something added to it, then it should be in writing on that plan that I need that. And so I, that's, that's my, that's my part there. And so. Uh, if I was told that it was deferred. I wasn't told it was deferred. I, you know, if if it, nobody said anything about my plans needing fire sprinklers and even inquiring. With the general. Engineer that designed them because his statement says none this project, as you had mentioned, he said none required. Now, he didn't write it on here and but and and actually after talking with you and James and Juliana. I called him and said, hey, do you know? That this is what's being required now for the city of no, I wasn't aware of that. So well, now you know. So now he's aware of what's going on. So regardless of all of that. The main point I have and only argument I have here is. I'm not arguing the code that and I and the the safety issue, the child, I mean, that's tragic for anybody and I and I get that. The problem that I'm at right now is we have this house complete, almost done one hundred percent. To go in and do these sprinklers at this point means I have to tear apart the house to do it. It's not just a matter of I'm framed up, I can throw in some pipes, tie in some sprinklers, we have sheet rock in, we have dry or. Textured cabinets are in, doors are in, we're ready for flooring and finished plumbing and lights and switches and we're done. At this point now, I have to open up a hole every six feet in the ceiling. And that ceiling's gonna look like a pincushion when it's done. So it's not just a matter of that. It's it's to me, it's not as simple that this has got to be a code and we gotta do it no matter what. I think that there's gotta be something in there that says, hey, if this was your house. The work is gonna take to make those patches in that ceiling is gonna look like a pincushion. It's just, it's gonna look horrible. Not to mention the cost incurred with that is, well, I've already put together estimates, the fire sprinkler system without. The phase that we're in at this point would be about nine thousand dollars. Simple, easy cost, we could have covered that because they have to go in and work in in pieces in and they can't access the attic, it's too tight. That's why we have to make holes in it. The cost is eleven thousand dollars estimated just for the system. The time and the take that it's gonna take for us to open up the ceiling, open up two walls. We have to patch that and repair it and come back and paint it. We are at an estimated cost of thirty-one thousand dollars for that system if. The system can pass the flow rates with the existing meter and water lines in that system. I've had all of our. Water lines. We've had slab attachment issues, we dealt with those during the project midterm, that wasn't on our permit. We had plumbing and water lines fail inspection, we replaced all of those. That's not on the plans or the permit that those need to replace. And through all those phases, those would have been the times for somebody to inquire and say. You may need or you need fire sprinklers, where's the fire sprinkler plant? We started building this project. Back in April, as soon as we pulled the permit. This is January twenty-fourth. December seventh, I was informed that I needed fire sprinklers. Is it not the city's inspector re- re- responsibility, and I asked James this. To inspect my pipes. For the sprinklers and he said, yes, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that is correct.
So when I got. Framing inspection. Which he signed for all of those things that were done, rough electrical, rough plumbing, rough. Mechanical framing. Everything to sheet rock roofing, foundation, and I can pass this around and conceal this. All these names were signed. It never once was I told them I was missing my fire sprinkler system. So I'm under the assumption, I I since I picked up the permit, I was under the assumption I didn't need fire sprinklers, not until I inquired for additional literature. Did I get the notice from James that I needed fire sprinklers? So for me. I feel like now we're creating a hardship. And an exuberant expense to go back and do this, not to mention a minimum of a four month delay. We're already at almost two months now. I stopped the project December seventh. That was when I first heard that we may have to do this. And at that point, I couldn't see going any further because we're, that's just gonna be even more work to do down the road. So where we're at now is is we're at almost two months loss of rent for my client delay. It's four weeks for a fire sprinkler suppression design, that's another month's loss. Her loss of rent is three thousand a month. That's nine thousand dollars lost before we even get a plan to move forward. We'll be a minimum of another month to do that. Now she's at twelve thousand dollars loss. Not to mention delays and hardships and the things that I lose in not being able to go forward with this job. So. That I guess that's why my argument to say, hey, I feel like the city. Aired and being able to inform me that I was needing of these and now at this point, it's a little bit late to come in and tell me I have to do them. I think it's, I don't, I don't argue the law, I don't argue the liability, that part of it, I don't argue any of that. I just, I don't understand how now we can go back. That's the same as going and just going, well, you know, Dwayne. Sorry, your your house needs fire sprinklers now, we may as well go and put them in. You know, what about, I mean, to me, it just, it doesn't make sense to have to.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest maybe opening public comment, closing and then. Deliberate and asking any questions that you need from Mr. O'Gorman or myself.
Okay, yep. Yeah, that's what I was doing. I'm gonna open the public comment and then I'll come back to council for questions. For Mr. O'Gorman and actually I'll, I'm gonna close comment. I'll go to our attorney first, if that's okay, if Mr. Henyon has any comment and then I'll come back to the council, but I'll go ahead and open up the public comment regarding. This item.
I'm Don Marie Autry. I do need to tell you guys this, if you. Choose to allow this, that sets precedence and precedence means that when my house burns down. I can come and say. I don't have to put sprinklers in because. You let him do. Secondly, the house that still exists next door, the duplex next door was built. Many years ago. By the same people who built the other one and the other one went up like a cracker, boom. That one there could go up anytime. I'm just saying. You know, it needs to be done, especially. You mentioned a childcare facility could go in there. And I and and I also am curious about why the owners are not present. That that really strikes me. And then also, is this the only thing that you've built in since two thousand nineteen? I'm wondering, and you know, laws change every day. California, you now have five days to be to register a vehicle when you move here. Five days, used to be ten. Laws change every day. You're supposed to be paying attention to that, not be ignorant to it when you own a business. Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comment?
Lorenzo Love, this. A little background here, I I live in an identical duplex. But these duplexes were all built by Phil Healy.
It was in the seventies.
Sixties, seventies.
Yeah, and he built these all over town. And they're all kind of crappy. This will be the first one with a fire suppression supplemental. I I don't know, this is why people don't build houses in California. I know it saves lives. But not getting able to have a house. Yeah, there's there's. Pros and cons, yeah, it would have saved a life if it had one, it would have saved that kid's life. But all these other duplexes all over town don't have it either. And I don't know, it's a tough decision.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Thank you, Lorenzo. Yes.
First, first of all, I'm not arguing that the.
Actually, sorry, Mr. O'Gorman, let me, I I that's public comment, I'm gonna close public comment. And then I'm gonna go back, go to our attorney, then we're gonna go back to you for questions, that's okay, and then you can respond to their questions. No, for, I'll close public comment on this matter. I'm gonna go to you, Mr. Henyon, are you online?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This might be the easiest issue ever presented to you because you don't have any discretion to grant it. The state law supersedes anything that we want to do and our own ordinances say that. Our building official can't give an occupancy permit unless. The building complies with state or local laws. And our local laws adopt the. The fire code and the city doesn't have discretion to grant. Uh, no matter how egregious it might seem, how many facts the contractor argues are in his favor. Um, it's simply not within the council's discretion. When I was counted council and the law was first passed, it wasn't mandatory. And people would come before the board of supervisors and ask. Um, for a waiver and they would normally get it. But the state, as we have seen multiple times. Is unhappy with local control on many issues and simply took that discretion away from us. So. Uh, it wouldn't. I mean, facts aside, legally, this council doesn't have the discretion to grant what's being requested of it. Submit it.
Thank you, Mr. Henyon. Okay, dude. And we want to respond to the public comment.
Uh, you know, it's it's really not necessary, it's just kinda, I mean, it's information is water under the bridge. Fire sprinkler systems aren't designed to save lives, they're designed to to give you a few extra minutes to hopefully get out of the house. In the case of a child, I have a good friend and client who's a captain in the Eugene Fire Department. That told me that small children. Gets scared and they hide and they are trained to find bodies, that's it. And it's so that I think there's a misconception of what the fire sprinkler system is designed to do. And yes, I have built more houses than just one in two thousand nineteen. But every si- every plan and design is a little different and I know this has just come down to that. I'm not arguing any of the laws or the requirements that have to be met. So it sounds like according to the city attorney, we were. Very likely going to have to put sprinkler system in. My my question to the city council is, is is the city council willing to pay for that? Because I don't feel like this is my error, this is not my fault, I didn't go into this. With the idea that I wasn't going to put sprinklers in here, that was never the case. I don't argue that they're required. My thing is, is I was never. My impression is, is the authority that approves and stamps those plans, it's their responsibility to say, these are the things you need. It's complete, here it is. That's when I walk out the door with that plan and my eyes, that plan is complete and I'm to build to that plan and I know I can't deviate from that. That's been trained, that's in me, right? So when I'm almost done with the project and now they changed the plan, my my. My my sight on this is that the city. Had missed putting that in my plan that those were required. And it shouldn't have gone out without that, and I feel like that's the city's fault, not mine, not my customers, not anybody else's. The city approves those plans, so if we're going to have to put those in at this point because the cost is exuberant. We're talking a minimum without loss of rent, thirty-one to thirty-two thousand dollars with the potential to go up to as much as seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. Is the city prepared and will they be willing to pay for that, whether it's from your liability insurance or whichever the case may be? So that's my question.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna answer that, our attorney can answer that, and then I think it would, we're not gonna answer any questions and. You feel the right, I believe Mr. Tenyon advised you to get an attorney, whether what our decision's going to be. So I'm gonna close comment and I'm gonna open up to city council members for any comment, if they wish to make any comment or any questions. Mr. O'Gorman, I'll go to Councilman Keg first.
Couple things on this. How, I know you've obviously done lots, lots and hundreds and probably thousands of projects. How often do you get that where they, I mean, most time on plans, it usually states on there, doesn't it, that you need sprinklers? Uh, required?
Yes, this is the first time that I have not seen that on a plan.
Comes with me too.
When, yeah, it's always with anything I've ever done with the county or any other governing authority and even in the city in the past. It was on there. This is required or in working with Dave, Dave would say, Rob, you need fire sprinklers, here's your permit. The deferred was no problem, but I was told at the time I picked up a permit that I would need this other piece of information and to get it to him. And he wouldn't let that down. Until I got it. Now, he would let me build, but we had also at a point, if we were at the point where we needed those, that particular part of the project to be in and we weren't ready for it, the job stopped. So it's never been a, it's it's this.
Yeah, which um, which is a loss leads me to the second part of this question is like, what you just basically stated is. Every time you get an inspection on all of this, it's usually something is stated that you're past that point of no return, I mean. Every time I've ever seen an inspection, they're like, you need, where's this, where's that, it's not. At the end of a project and you're now at this point where you're past a point of no return, I've never seen that myself ever. So.
Correct, every time we've had an inspection, if I was missing something, it was noted on the plans and the permit and I couldn't proceed until that was re-inspected. Or inspected for that part.
Cause there's so much that goes with the sprinkler system, I don't know if the council knows about this, but. You have to, like Mr. O'Gorman stating, you have to have the proper water size coming, the proper meter coming in, you have to have this proper pipes coming in. So there's a lot more to a sprinkler or water inspection. Than just, if there's noted that there's gonna be sprinklers in this, there's also, also it has to be noted that there. Has to be proper sizing for all this water to be coming into this system too.
Yes, there's a specific flow rate that it has to meet, I think it's. I think it's like ten to twelve gallons for, I can't remember the minutes are, a flow rate, so. The size of meter that's there is is possible, it may not provide a flow rate and my estimates don't include replacing that. My estimates are in-house is on the assumption that. They could put in a low flow sprinkler head, use the existing three-quarter supply line that's there. Um, and then in hopes that that would pass the inspection, if not, we'd have to provide a new supply line.
And just to, for clarification, this is the city manager, Jason Ledbetter, those, all of those things would be on a. Design from a engineering firm that specializes in. Uh, fire suppression systems, which. The plan set that you're referencing, that's not legal for them to put that in there because they don't specialize in that, so ultimately. I'm a little confused, Mr. Keg, are you stating that? Are you misremembering or are you just omitting number thirteen and fourteen on the plan set that I showed you that states? Provide pipe insulation for freeze protection of fire. Okay, cause it it just.
Mr. O'Gorman states, I'm not denying any state laws or anything of that, I'm just saying that there. Inspection missed. Plain and simple.
Well, no, I guess.
Being a contractor and doing this for a number of years. That this should have never gotten to this stage, plain and simple. So that's where I stand.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I just would point out that we're talking about a he said, she said argument, which I feel is not really a valid argument because we have. A building official that stands by having made statements on two different occasions in July and October and so. We can't really litigate a he said, she said scenario, I will say that there's obviously always opportunity for room for improvement. And that is what Mr. O'Gorman is pointing out with. A a change and that is what your planning director has alluded to, that there has been a change in how we go about meeting with contractors, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. K. Uh, I'll go to Councilman Baker. Any questions for Mr. O'Gorman or comments? Or questions for the attorney?
Comments at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Davis? No comments. Mayor Proton McQuaid, any comments or questions for Mr. O'Gorman or attorney online?
Yes. And with all due respect, Mr. O'Gorman, you have been wonderful in helping us at Beacon Hope and and we really appreciate that. I know we put sprinkler, we had to put sprinklers in there. Who has the ultimate authority for knowing the California building code on a job? Is it, who who's the person that's responsible for knowing that?
From what I remember, contractors law ultimately is the builder.
Okay, okay, I'm just, oh, I'm just asking, I I have a brother that's an electrical contractor down in Imperial County, so. Um, and usually he's one responsible for it. Did either the plumber or the electrical contractor, because you had very reputable, you have people that I've used before, they're wonderful, did any of them ever? Catch this and say, hey, have you thought about this, is this, is this gonna be required because it's new construction?
No.
No? Okay.
No, and and honestly, I even inquired at the time I picked up the. No, and and honestly, I even inquired at the time I picked up the permits. And no one, no one informed me that I would need fire sprinklers. So my my assumption was that if I was missing something on the plan, it would have been marked on it. And the reason I asked that question is when I was estimating the job, I didn't have a uh a stamp approved set yet.
But it wasn't missing on the plan because they can't put it on the plan because they're not licensed to. They just wrote, what did they write on that plan again? In the in the red, was a red stamp?
The red stamp is from us and that that's that states formal approval of these plans does not relieve the designer or builder of his responsibility of compliance with state and local laws.
Okay, and then item twelve and thirteen on the plans?
Item thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen, thank you.
Thirteen states, these are, these are not our plans. So I want that, that's very important to me.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 I'm sorry. They're not our plans. They're Mr. O'Gorman's plans. So his, he paid an engineer to craft the plans. And the engineer he paid made the statements on his plan set, number thirteen, provide pipe insulation for freeze protection of fire sprinkler riser run installed in unconditioned space. And number fourteen, sprinkler pipes installed in unheated spaces to be protected from freezing. So that's where I'm a little bit confused. His engineer obviously states that it's required and that they're doing it. Word of mouth is one thing, but I am here to talk about facts today. And his plan set that he submitted, that infers to me that he's going to put in a fire suppression system. Otherwise, are you stating that there's just a bunch of lingo on plan sets from engineers that's irrelevant to your plan set?
Their generic plan sets typically have a generic notes, building notes that may not apply to every project, correct? And also, if you notice, Jason, on line twenty-two, and you can perceive this however you want, but when it says in parentheses, none this project, I gotta take it by the word, none this project. If I, and that's when I called and asked, it says none this project and I can get a letter from, it's their viewpoint. I know what Morgan had told me and that was that I do not need sprinklers. Now, I'm not saying he needs to know that. I don't argue that these things aren't on the plan, but what I am arguing is, is that how come my plans came out of the office then without an approved fire sprinkler plan?
I guess how come the plans came out of the office stipulating thirteen and fourteen that you were going to put a fire sprinkler system in? And ultimately, we work with Morgan quite a bit and every other verbiage when there is no fire sprinkler system, it states on the plan sets from that same engineering firm you're using, no fire sprinklers existing or proposed. And so.
Fire sprinklers designed by others, none this project. What does that tell you, Mr. Ledbetter?
That tells me ultimately that uh fire sprinklers are required and that they're incapable of supplying them for you, but that is an interpretation, right?
Right. So we're, we can.
Excuse me, Mr. Gorman. Uh, Mr. McCoy has the floor and these are his questions. So please refer, or refer from asking him.
And let me uh questions until, let me review that. So Mr. McCoy has the floor again. Thank you. Let me review that our fire chief has stated that it would help to save lives by giving more times, what you're saying. I think, I think fires in a, in fire sprinkler systems in homes are crazy. They're nuts. It drives the price of them up. Um, that I mean, but my personal, what I personally think doesn't have anything to do with this here, but I mean, I think they're just crazy. I know as soon as this law was passed, the uh they started having fire systems in cold weather uh put in and freezing and causing more damage. And the insurance uh lobby said, God, we want, we'd like to get it taken care of. That's why I'm, uh, but I'm asking about this because it is, it's a law. It's like I can't go out and drive um ninety miles an hour on the the highway or I'm probably gonna get pulled over by the CHP. Um, yeah. Yeah. Have you spoken with your architect regarding the disconnect on these plans between the ar- the architectural firm and yourself? There seems to be somewhat of a disconnect because they weren't, apparently weren't clear enough to you.
Right. And and I understand. And that's what I had mentioned. At the point when we pulled the permit and I had, and we were putting plumbing in, I had asked him about that. And I then to clarify the none this project and that's when he told me that, no, they're not required.
Okay.
For that, for that's why he wrote none this project.
So then 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 right there is where it falls.
Right.
Right there on the architect. Um. So my next question is kind of moot. What responsibility does the architect have in all this? We can see that uh for the architect, um, having done their job sufficiently and uh that 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 you wouldn't have this issue and it wouldn't be falling on you and on us. Um. The authority to pay for this seems to me that it lies squarely with your architect. That, I mean, that would be the person, if I was building a home, um. I I mean, that'd be the person where where I'd, you know, go and say, hey, listen, you 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 didn't, you didn't, you gave me bad, you gave me bad plans. And I've, I haven't built like you and you are precision builders is a wonderful, I um, I would recommend you to anybody. So that's that's not, that's not an issue. But having worked on, you know, a mil- a several million dollar project up here as as um an overseer and a and a board member and then having just been a grunt on the little beacon of hope and then having done a house and a couple of duplexes in Southern California forty-five years ago with my father, laws were different then. But I mean, one of the things that we've done and we've come to people like you who we trust and uh and and um and, you know, uh Zimmelman and that to help us with those sorts of things, including our fire suppression systems. Um. I know that uh u- usually the architect will put that in there. And if they don't put it in there, I can understand that you might see that it, you know, um, they're not requiring it, but um the fact that the architect, in my opinion only, I can't speak for the council, the architect made a mistake here. And I think the architect needs to fess up to what's going on. Uh, if, because if if it's, if it's state law, which it is, or state building code, we're not gonna be able to supersede it as a council here.
Understood. So I, in response to that, I have a question is, can I build without a city permit? Can I build these plans without your stamp of approval?
Absolutely. You can build the plan set that has been approved by us. Absolutely. It is up to snuff and meets a number of building code um regulations. You cannot get an occupancy permit until you do the fire suppression system.
Is it the city's responsibility then to tell me that my plans are complete or not complete? If the city is approving my plan, is it not their responsibility to let me know that they're one hundred percent?
Is it, was it the architect's responsibility to give you complete plans or did you pay them for incomplete plans?
His.
What what did you pay them for?
Paid him for our plans to build the house.
Complete plans?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say again, goes back to your architect at that point in time. I I don't, I don't, there's, I mean, I don't see any blame to be placed anywhere except with the architect. I, you know, I mean, yeah, you, I mean, in any city in California, you can go and build a home, a duplex, a shed, and then go back down to the city and say, you know, I want to get a permit after the fact. The dilemma again lies in whether they grant it. Number one, I'm not talking about Wairika. I'm talking about other cities that I've lived in small, and I'm talking about small cities, smaller than Wairika, twenty-five hundred, whether or not, whether or not they grant that, whether or not they grant the the uh certificate of occupancy. You know, that's, that's gonna be up to that individual municipality. But I mean, it's ob- obviously what our city manager has just shared is is that the the building uh inspector wouldn't grant a certificate of occupancy um based on not having in the fire suppression system.
So, and yes. So you're saying it's not the city's responsibility then to tell me that my plans are complete and I'm and I'm final and I don't need that now?
Well, it's your responsibility to know whether your plans are complete. It's your responsibility to know the building code. And it's your responsibility to deal with it with your architect. I mean, I'm, with all due respect, I mean, that's, that's what I would see. And and I think the first talk that I would have would be with my architect.
So my question then is, and with all due respect then, is why do I need the city's approval? Why do I need a building permit?
To make sure that the building is ultimately uh safe for inhabitants.
Cause your owners will not be able to.
Correct.
Rent that out.
Yeah, you so, but isn't it, it, I mean, if the city then is, is the government authority and is saying that we, we've looked at these plans and to our best of knowledge, they're complete and ready to build and meet all codes, correct? That's the responsibility of the building department. Am I not? Am I wrong?
Yeah, i- if you're, if we, if we assume, if we assume, and that's the word I don't like because you know what they say about that. Um, if we assume that thirteen and fourteen and are the are, that they just put that in there for super, it's superfluous that they just threw that information in about insulating your fire suppression um system, then then that would be it. But it's not ipso facto that if you build, if if a a person in any city builds a building, that they're going, that it's going to be owner occupied, it's going to be occupied at all.
Right.
That's that, that's not ipso facto.
So is it the, is it the governing authority's responsibility? If they're inspecting that building, is it not their responsibility to make sure, because they're signing it, because you don't want the liability, right? That that is built to the codes?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanian?
If if I might.
We're not gonna answer any questions regarding legal. I'm gonna.
Yeah, this is kind of repetitive.
Any legal questions?
If um, if the um, if the contractor who is, could obviously add this extra funds on to his bill as a extra um thinks that he can s- um convince the Superior Court to ignore state and local law, I would be happy to address that in the council's behalf. Otherwise, um, the um, my advice to you, the confidential, and I don't think you should be answering questions that are intended to impute liability on the cities.
Thank you, Mr. Hanian. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Appreciate your time.
Um, I'm gonna wrap it up. I'm not gonna have any comments. I'm just going to say that we have the letter of recommendation from our attorney and the advice, and I will go to the council for um the vote if we're going to allow this deferment, which is against the advice of our legal counsel. Um, as we are not, as he stated, that we don't have the authority of the state of California laws to make that decision, the governing body. With that said, I'm gonna go to roll call and um I will go to Mr. K. And the motion is, I'm sorry. Oh. Sorry, I gotta go to the.
So.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a motion?
I've, I've got ready to go back. I'm, I missed a spot. Sorry. So the recommendation.
I don't think there was a motion, was there?
No, there wasn't.
Yeah, the recommendation was that the council let it die without a motion.
Yes.
Mister, Mr. Mayor, I I think if there's no motion, then ultimately you move on to the next uh item.
Sorry, Bush, there is no motion to uh to grant the wishes of Mr. Gorman and that we don't have the body to approve this. Um, and um override the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this person, thank you, Mr. Gorman. I mean, this uh portion of the meeting is adjourned, so I'm gonna take a short recess, if that's okay, for five minutes. Come back. Good evening. Thank you for being patient. Sorry about the delay. We ran over a little bit on the first presentation. Um, a called uh uh city council meeting for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. All rise for pledge allegiance. Just wanna remind the city council and all uh members of the audience, silence their cell phones, please. And this is our special presentation, so we're gonna open it up, do a little different. We're gonna open up with uh our planning director. Juliana, if you're ready. She's not ready. Oh, she's coming. Okay.
You have uh Michelle from Plan West available as well, who will help with the presentation today. Um, Plan West is the on call or is the see what I mean? I can't touch the electrical. I can't touch anything. I, for some reason, shock everything and I like bring down systems. Um, I don't know why. I'm sorry. Blood poisoning. Um. But yeah, so uh Plan West is the uh contractor for the housing element that was chosen by the city council in October of twenty twenty-one. And so, Michelle, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hopefully you guys can all hear me.
Yes.
We can. Thank you.
Great. We're, we're just gonna cover some, uh, it's gonna be very, very similar if you were at our planning commission meeting last week, Wednesday, and it's gonna be very similar to the presentation last Tuesday. Um, but we'll basically, the format for tonight is we'll do the presentation. We want to be able to take public comment and public questions tonight. So we request that we roll into that after the presentation. After we've received public comments and questions, we'll report all of those. Um, and then we'll go to council questions and discussion, um, just for the format for tonight. And uh so we'll be covering our update overview for those of you who are just joining us for this process and update on where we are in the process. Some content and the recommendations are within the housing element. And then, as I said before, questions and discussion. So I'm gonna hand this over to Michelle now to kind of kick off an update of the overview itself, or the uh overview of the update itself.
So I um, I can see um uh maybe give me a guise to what screen we're on and then I can uh go through from there. Um, or if you want to share your screen, um, work out these little technical um things.
One second, they're gonna get that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, let's see here. We already went through all that. So um, we're going ahead and we're kicking off on slide number five here and um we're gonna just start off with uh just a high-level overview of some housing element basics. So the housing element is part of the city's general plan. Um, it is on its own um update cycle um that are uh spelled out in state law unlike other elements of the of general plan. So uh the housing is on an eight-year update cycle. And so you'll see in the document and probably here tonight that we're in the sixth cycle. This is the uh six cycle, um six housing element for the city of Wairika and basically across the state. Um. And uh so the update schedule um is prescribed by state law as well. And um there's just a higher level of accountability overall with housing elements. And that's just been leveling up. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. So what does a housing element do? Um, it is, um, it sets forth the conditions for developing and preserving an adequate supply of housing, um, including housing that is affordable um for all income levels in the city. So from your market rate, high-end housing is down to um housing units that are more, that are affordable to lower-income households. And so it plans, um, it sets forth uh policies, goals and programs um to uh to achieve that. Um, and that local governments must um adequately, adequately plan to meet their existing and projected housing needs, including their share of the regional housing needs allocation. Um, the analysis, which is quite lengthy, um includes a quantification and quantity a descriptive analysis of the speci- specific needs, um, income groups, demographics and that sort of thing. Um, the available resources um in the housing element uh for the city. Uh, next slide, please. So the strategies and programs of a housing element are gonna um for Wairika and it's pretty consistent. Um, theme is uh focuses on uh conserving and improving, improving existing housing, um maximizing housing opportunities throughout the community, assisting in the provision of affordable housing, removing constraints and barriers, uh regulatory um uh procedural, that types of thing, and promoting fair housing and equal housing opportunities throughout the community. Next slide, please. Um, and as folks may be aware of, there's been a plethora of new housing law. Um. This uh this slide here just is a very um just a very small sampling of um some of these new laws. And there's getting more and more passed every year. Some key ones um are uh for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are firmly furthering fair housing. Um, that's basically equity, looking at housing needs through um uh different lens. There's also been amendments to the surplus lands acts. That's concerns land that's owned by a government. And then SB thirty five, which is ministerial streamlined approval process. And affordable housing development. So you will see in the programs, there are some of these. Get picked up as programs because they're they're new requirements that have to be met for all jurisdictions. Next slide, please. And the next one. Please. So how did we get here? As Juliana indicated, in October twenty twenty one. Plan West was retained for services and we've had a number of. Community meetings. There was a community workshop back just about a year ago. And so forth, just lay the slide lays out the various efforts and what's been undertaken. And so the most recent was January eighteenth on the plan commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed final draft. So and then as far as public engagement. Um, there's, the city has been in direct outreach and with the continuum of care. Uh, Siskiyou County, the Karoo Housing Authority, there's been posts to social media, newspapers. There was an email newsletter, announcements at city meetings and also information on the city's website. And perhaps after my presentation, Juliana wants to elaborate a little further on that. There's certainly she she wouldn't know more in detail. So as far as next step, so next slide, please. Um, so we had, well, we're on the January twenty fourth, a special joint meeting tonight. Um, February seventh, uh, city council adoption and filing before February fifteenth. Which is the HCD filing deadline for Siskiyou County Housing Elements to be filed. And that's that filing before October fifteenth will start the certification review process with HCD. Next slide, please, and the following one, please. So, um, the contents of the housing element, so this is basically just a walkthrough of the table contents introduction. Um, which looks at the guiding policies and principles, gives an overview of the public participation. General plan consistency and looking ahead towards the future. The goals, policies and programs that is a walkthrough of the. The implementation programs, how the city during this next cycle for the next eight years, this what it's going to do. To remove barriers and to implement housing law and meet housing needs in the city of Waireka. For for everybody. Um, and then the third item here, chapter three is the analysis of the previous housing element. This is a mandatory requirement and just evaluation of how the city did with its last housing element. And the programs that were in effect and ones that were completed, the ones that were maybe got part of the work done and some that maybe. Were done, which is not uncommon, um, because of maybe a lack of resources or other other factors. So next slide, please. So this is a walkthrough of the appendices. Appendices A and B are a needs assessment, assessment of fair housing. They're very lengthy appendices. Um, so this, this, these two sections. The needs assessment, which is A, basically updates the some of the data from the previous housing element. To incorporate current census data and other data from the state like the Department of Finance. Um, a firmly furthering fair housing analysis, which is really housing needs, but looking at it through. Uh, different lenses of kind of just geographic distribution of it that may be occurring in the community. Appendix C is housing sites inventory, another mandatory element. Of the of the housing element. And then we have the appendix D and F. Those are funding resources, kind of an essay summary of available. State and federal government programs that the city may be available eligible to apply for or may. There may be a project that comes to the city that it could be, that would be eligible for glossary, just, you know, terminology. And appendix F is a new addition that was added in response to HCD input. And that is the stakeholder interviews. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and I can take over from here, Michelle. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so one of the important things to come out of this is we understand that there's a number of state mandated programs that we need to integrate into this. And there may be programs from our previous previous cycle that we have in here. But there is also an opportunity to have programs, goals and policies that are unique to the needs of Waireka. And so I, you know, putting Michelle on the spot, Plan West has been contracted to do several other small cities in Siskiyou County, including the city of Dunsmere, which I'm very familiar with. And the key approaches to Waireka's housing needs are not going to be the same for Dunsmere's. And so there are going to be some differences in each element to deal with the differences in our community. For example, there are approximately eighty four different vacation rental units within the city of Dunsmere, which is a significant amount of the percentage of the housing units. You have four. And so the needs of those two different cities are going to be drastically different in how we recommend different programs for this element. So when we went through our public engagement, one of the things we also did, as Michelle stated, we did interviews with people in the housing industry as well as housing advocates. Uh, major employers, because one of the things, you know, coming to Waireka in November of twenty twenty one. Uh, we heard from a number of our employers that they just cannot find enough employees and one of their major complaints is housing. And so Michael Rose from the casino Pfeiffer, which used to be Norcal, that's a big issue. As well as, you know, some of the up and coming businesses that we have that are constructing. So we have the potential for a new hotel development, new travel center. Um, Piper is actually expanding as well and also has long term expansion plans in addition to what they're proposing to do. And so one of their major concerns is getting enough workers to be able to either commute or live in the city. Um, and because housing is an issue in most of Siskiyou County at this point, you know, there definitely needs to be every jurisdiction stepping in to assist with that. So our approach from the input that we got from the interviews, uh, from our general plan, open houses and other programming. Uh, one of the things we found is we need to provide support for all of our housing programs. So historically, we have not had a planning department that was able to handle implementation of housing programs. And hopefully now we have a lot more fiscal resources to be able to do that. We've also brought on board housing tools as a contractor to assist us with housing specific programming that we're working on right now. One of the other things we found is that your zoning code is very outdated and can be very, very restrictive. And so one of the things in your zoning code is that your zoning code is very explicit about if it is not talked about, it's not allowed. Which we usually want to see a little bit more flexibility for change in housing style. Or at least some flexibility in the types of housing that are allowed. One of the other things is that you are, your your zoning code has this very interesting loophole in it. Um, you have planned unit developments, which are very common for cities to have in their zoning code. But the current zoning code does not follow current law around planned unit development. So right now, anybody can get a planned unit development through a conditional use permit process. So Humbug Hollow is an example of where someone came into an R one zone. They turned it into a planned unit development and now it is actually high density residential. And so that is what we call cottage cluster housing. Um, when you go and take a look at the unit per acre, it exceeds the current R one zone. And so your your zoning code is is simultaneously very restrictive, but it also has these interesting loopholes for people to come through and apply those. Planned unit developments with very little requirements associated with them. One of the other things that we heard is again workforce housing. It doesn't matter what the income level is. We need it at all income levels. So our moderate housing are people making between thirty two thousand dollars a year up to about fifty five thousand dollars a year. Which is a majority of the industries within our city. And the other workforce housing piece is, you know, again, trying to get workers over closer to where they're working. Getting better transportation from those housing areas to the workforce or the employer that they're going to be working at. One of the other interesting pieces is in our housing needs assessment, we found that there is a large percentage of people in single family homes with three bedrooms or more. That are over the age of fifty five. And so we would consider those people moving into the kind of the empty nester stage of their life, which is perfectly fine to want to stay in your. Single family home. But one of the things we want to make available and what we actually heard is direct input is some more smaller scaled, single level housing for people. Who are older or and or experiencing a mobility issue. Um, and so one of the reasons why for that is in your housing, you know, market, you want to be able to have different styles of family or different styles of household. Evolve up into the houses. So as people come in, like myself, who does not have children, I do not need three bedrooms and two bathrooms. But as I, you know, plan my family, I may need more bedrooms. And if we're not giving up those larger scale homes for those families, it's going to be very difficult to build those styles of home. Um, for them moving forward. So we want to create all of these different levels of housing types to allow people to move within our community rather than moving out of our community. Uh, one of the other concerns that was stated with the recommendation for small scale, single story housing. Is that a lot of people are not able to afford medical care and residential home care. Um, it's very, very costly to send someone to hospice care and there may be other options where they can live a more independent life. Um, when people have memory issues, they're they're constructing these very nice cottage neighborhood styles for people with memory issues where there's onsite medical care. Um, to maintain independent lifestyle with having to go to a residential home. And so trying to be able to accommodate that sector, um, we do have one, two developments that are senior focused and they're completely full and they have wait lists. So that obviously shows we have a need for that style of housing or more accessible housing. Housing is an economic issue. Um, so again, talking to your employers, we are going to continue to have an economic issue if we do not address more housing units for workers. And that's just something that, you know, our Siskiyou Economic Development Council shared in the REC memo. That housing was a topic that came up as a difficult economic issue to get over. Um, this one's actually very unique to Waireka. It's called adaptive reuse is where we take commercial buildings that are vacant or underutilized as well as other larger scale buildings. And we make it flexible so that they can either do what we call mixed use development, where there's a first story commercial element. And apartments on top or converting the entire building over to a housing development. So an example of that is the Shopko building that is on highway three. Um, that could be retrofitted into apartments through an adaptive reuse program. It utilizes a already constructed lot and it's it's a good use of that space because there's nothing in it at the moment. Um, updating regulations meet state requirements, as we've said before, and then finally improving our housing information. So one of the things we found is interesting is accessory dwelling units are a very easy accessible way to add a unit on your property. For either a family member or for renting out to a single individual or a couple. Um, and the city of Waireka really hasn't been utilizing that style of housing and that's been in state law since twenty eighteen. And so improving the information on accessory dwelling units, even as we've gone through this process, we've had a lot of people increase their interest in doing the accessory dwelling unit. Um, ordinances and state law there. So providing that information. Uh, Siskiyou County Planning and Community Development is actually working on stock ADU plans, which would basically be pre engineered plans that you can take, bring in. And all you have to do is pay for the building permit, you're ready to go. And so that eliminates a lot of costs and it eliminates a lot of time for people wanting to build those ADU structures. And then you can customize the facades from there. You basically just get your kind of stick built option. So next slide, please. So the summary of changes. So since we last had this version in front of planning commission and city council back in August, September. Uh, it was sent over to the state for an initial review period. And so there were four programs that have been added based off of the state comments and these are all state mandated programs. First off is water sewer connection policy. Um, this is a really interesting one because we don't discriminate unit types for connecting for water or sewer. If it's available, we would like you to connect and it's open to you to do that. And actually, we require sewer connections. We do not necessarily require water. There is still an option for wells within the city. Uh, but we do have to have a city adopted policy stating that we do not discriminate units connecting to our system based off of income. And so we have not been doing that. We just need to basically put that policy in place. Uh, we do need some updates in our ADU ordinances as well as recommendations for our education on that and the information we give to people. So we are expecting a separate summary note from the state on the ADU updates specifically. Um, but we did get information from them to update this document and that shouldn't be an issue today. Streamline ministerial approval, Senate Bill thirty five. We are actually currently working on that. Uh, we had received a grant in twenty twenty called Senate Bill two and the local early action program. Uh, which is funding for this program. This was one of the programs that the city council had in the work plan for that. So we are finishing that out this year. Um, but we do have to have a program in place because it's not in place yet. And finally, we need to update our definition of family within the government code section. So our definition is an older version, which is not legally defensible anymore. And in terms of local government or any government in general, we don't like to define what a family is because it gets into really messy. Case law around familial connections or bloodline and we we don't want to define that term. Uh, we just kind of want to let people be in most cases. And so it's either to update or remove that definition. A general practice now is to just not try and define what a family means and keep the government out of that definition. Finally, we do have seven programs have been revised. Uh, these are just based off of specific comments. We did provide a copy of the HCD letter in the planning commission packets. We can get you a copy as well. Um, but we do have the summary of all of those in the lovely little memo you did get from me last week, Tuesday. And that that outlines exactly what changed within those seven programs. We did get requested to have additional analysis in the housing needs section and the affirmatively furthering. Fair housing assessment. A lot of that was related to the Karoo tribe. Uh, they do have trust land within the city. And so that's kind of a very interesting relationship we have with them because they obviously provide housing to the people who live here. Um, but they are not subject to the same laws that we are. So they actually can supersede general plan and zoning codes. And we do need to work with them in tandem to make sure that as we develop in the future that we're developing in tandem and we're not in conflict with each other. And finally, we added the stakeholder interview input as a new appendancy. That was just a request from the state and plus, you know, it's just nice to see what people said in those interviews. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So this is where I'm gonna kind of step back and just, I'm gonna go sit in the back and just record the different questions and comments that are asked. And then I can return up here once you post public comment.
Right. Thank you. Right. Let's have a show of hands. Who's gonna comment on the housing element this evening? Me too. Okay. You're gonna pick the three people on, uh, housing element. Okay. And how many do I have for just regular public comment, not related to the housing element? Nobody? Okay. Are you gonna? Okay, so I'm gonna open up the public comment first. General, and then if you wanna, if you're first, if you want to do both at the same time, that's okay. I'm just gonna census because everyone's gonna talk. We're gonna have to discuss maybe shorten it a little bit, but it doesn't look like we have too many.
Mister Mayor, just for clarification, um, do you want me to timeout ten minutes then on this? Or five minutes?
Just five minutes that we don't have that many people raise their hands.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna stick to the standard five minutes for public comment, regular public comments, not related to the housing element. And then, yeah, then we'll go five minutes. So I'm gonna read the statement first for you to start. Public comment, public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meeting. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on a regular agenda, please address the council when that item is opened up for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane or disruptive remarks. Council members been recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during public comment. Section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking any action on any item not listed. On the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on a regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address. an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak in the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate speaker. Should you need additional special accommodations, remote microphone, please notice the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting for arrangements. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Public comment period is not intended for a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. All right.
Uh, my name is Debbie Batschababy. I'm a resident of Montague, but my parents own property here in Wairega. Uh, the last time I was here, I uh was going to address the topic at hand, and I was gavelled and told to sit down. And what I want to say about that is that if you're going to encourage public participation and people showing up to these meetings to gabble someone early in their comment for whatever your reason may have been um as a mayor, and I'm not just, I'm not targeting, I'm trying not to target. But it really doesn't allow the freedom and the, I mean, this is tough to do public comment. It's like your most important three or five or two minutes to impress upon those who of you who are making decisions. Because I may know something I may have experienced in another area that you might not have had to have living in rural America, where I lived in San Francisco Bay Area for years. And we've already gone through this one Bay Area plan, which is what we're the housing elements, the regional housing needs allocation. And I know this is not supposed to be housing element, but so my concern for that is in in what I was saying, trying to impress, and I'm sorry if it came off angry or what I'm a passionate person who's very concerned about our future. And the moral decisions that we are making for future generations, whether it's cutting off water, cutting off land, you know, for various reasons and and defining what housing should be when I think that that should be a personal thing, not a government thing. Um, I was also trying to impress upon you and not insult you in any kind of way that you took an oath. And that oath you swore. And when you swore and took the oath to not only the California State Constitution, which starts with Almighty God and the U S Constitution, which acknowledges God as our creator. You took a, you swore to us or the people who voted and elected you in that your number one duty was to protect their rights. Protect our rights, and that includes our property rights. So if government gives us our rights, what can government do? Take those rights away. So for me, it's super important that when you took your oath that it was so important to you that you could look yourself in the mirror and say, wow, my job is to protect these people, not to beautify Wairega, although that's a great goal. I'd love to see this. Sorry, this, you know, I'm I'm, it's sad to see what this town looks like. How can you be the fifth largest economy in the world and we once be the fifth wealthiest county in California and look the way we do? And it's not because we've accepted grants. It's because you had a working economy, a vibrant working economy with people who were excited about their jobs. But when you have government plans and agendas like the spotted owl and all these things that destroy what made this the fifth wealthiest county in the fifth largest economy, it's extraordinary. So anyway, I didn't mean to insult anybody. I don't want to do that. I'm nervous. I hate public comment. I do with a passion. It is uncomfortable. So anyway, um, but I do hope that you be generous with the people who do are brave enough, whatever, to come here and share what they need to share. Because not because in many cases, it's because we're concerned. And that's why I stand before you tonight. I'm concerned. The things that we just, so can I go into the next or is there going to, oh, there might be other people who want to do.
Yeah, I'll go to. So I'm going to see if someone has public comment.
Yeah.
You can stand there real quick because I don't think anybody else has had public comment.
I didn't inspire you to that.
So we'll close, we'll close time, we'll close time on that, Mister Ledbetter. Okay, anybody else have um any other public comment not related to the housing element? Okay.
Kind of.
Now you're up again.
Kind of a continuing, please. Kind of a continuance on 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 what I was just saying, you know. What compelled me to come tonight and come the first time was that, like I said, I've been through these plans. We've studied them in the Bay Area. It's why I left San Francisco having great jobs in the Bay Area and giving up those jobs and and a home that I loved because I, it broke my heart to see what was happening in the Bay Area, which was the one Bay Area plan. And all the regional housing needs allocation, all of this is not new, just like the hate speech is not new. They, these, I've got a book here. It's called Blueprint for a Sustainable Bay Area. This is nineteen ninety-six publication. And all the words that we're using here, R E N A, Regional Housing Needs Allocation, Sustainable, Livable, um, uh, social equity, environmental justice, making housing more affordable, um, walking, biking, taking public transportation. All these things that we are talking about in this rural area were already planned many, many years ago. They even talk about in this book and 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 this book called Planning for Sustainability, Creating Livable, Equitable, and Ecological Communities also talks about housing needs allocations, all the things, and this is a book that you see by U C Davis and San uh San Jose State University. They all say the same thing, and this book was published, I think, in nineteen ninety-four, but anyway, a long time ago is my point. This pamphlet right here uh by the A BAG, the Association of Bay Area Government. Last time I was here, I saw things in the housing, housing elements and the housing plans called COGS, Council of Governments. Council of Governments, like A BAG, the Association of Bay Area Government in the Bay Area are COGS, Council of Governments. They're unelected, self-appointed agencies heavily involved with making, they're not here from here. Say COG is Sacramento Council of Government. It's where probably people in the planning department have gotten a lot of training. They also mimic the same things in here. A bag is mentioned. So what do they keep mentioning and where do they go back? I would have loved to have seen on that that slide that talked about how did we get here and it started in twenty twenty-one? No, he didn't. This whole started in nineteen ninety-two. When they define what the word sustainability and sustainable development would mean for the twenty-first century. It's not a California thing. It's not a United States thing. It's much further than that. So if we're going to be local and community, I, my request, and I've got all these documents, I'd love to share them so that you can see the real history of where we are today. So that you can make those decisions that we've asked you when you took your oath of office to protect our rights. Because these housing elements, as soon as 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 innocent as they may sound, they're going to come with, right now, we're getting the carrot. Here's a grant for this. Here's a grant for this. But then there's the stick and it's not, it will be, there will be restrictions later. We're experiencing this in Sacramento with codes and regulations where you can't even have a wheelbarrow in your yard anymore. It has to be covered. Sacramento has already gone down this path. So my concern to all of you is to be informed decision makers, and I'm hopefully not insulting you in any shape or form. But I'm very concerned about where we're heading, the grants that we are getting ourselves into, the rabbit holes that we are going down, not understanding where we came from. And I'd be happy to meet with any of you. You could borrow these books. Um, in nineteen ninety-two was the Rio Earth Summit. All of these documents right here mention the Rio Earth Summit in and along with affordable housing and sustainability and all these things. There was a bill, H Congress three, five, three called Sustainable Development by a California politician. Later, the next year, it became an executive order twelve, eight, five, two, the President's Council on Sustainable Development. Later, it was changed to Smart Growth, which is what you're seeing in your documents. What you also see is general plans and comprehensive plans. We were even warned that in the United States, we can't use terms like Agenda Twenty-One because people in the NRA or people like me might vote out people who are voting for plans that follow Agenda Twenty-One Sustainable Development, and that is the plan we're following. Like it or not, called a conspiracy, not or not, even these documents that are are represent the same things that you're 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 looking at today. Talk about where these things came from, and I just encourage you and urge you please to consider what you're voting on, but and where it came from uh so that you could do what we asked you to do, which is to protect our rights, and thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next. Public comment on the housing.
They laugh every time I come up to them. Um, wow, that, my name is Louise Leato. I live in Wairega, and that's a hard act to follow. Um, and I'm, um, I have questions and I understand that it's just public comment. So hopefully, maybe Juliana later on can answer questions, or maybe the council can answer questions. I did talk to Juliana today. And I have to say, Juliana, thank you for putting the little bear in front of the elements because that was helpful for me. For those of you who don't know, it was if you looked at the element package that she handed out, there's little California bears in front of them. And what those means are that means that these are things that we don't have a choice in taking out. This is mandated. These are mandated laws. I counted ten of them. And so my question to Juliana, because I forgot to ask her that today when I talked to her and to the council, is can do we have to follow all of that stuff that's in that packet, every one of the housing elements, other than the mandated elements? In other words, if we take out, if we say, okay, we have to do those ten mandated elements, but the rest of that we don't want to do. Is that an option, you know, one by one to look at it? Um, and the other question I had was, and I'm, I asked Juliana, but I want to ask you this too. I saw in there that it says Regional Housing Trust Fund. So I'm concerned about the word regional just as Debbie is. And um I understand that COGS are involved in that. So is that an option for us? Would that happen to us? Can we say no to that? So that would be the question I would ask the council and Juliana. And also the other thing that caught my attention that made me concerned is because of my living situation. I live off of Highway three and we are in septic tanks. So I'm where it says four programs have been added, where it says water and sewer connections. Does that mean that if Juliana or the city council decides to get a grant for sewers? Would that mean that the housing units that are not on sewers, they're on septic tanks, would have to go on to sewers? Is that one way to increase? Because I've got empty lots. I've got a five acre empty lot in front of my house. And we've got lots all around me where I live, and I'm concerned about that. Because very frankly, when I moved here from the Bay Area and I moved here from a small town called Clayton, there were six hundred people in that town when I moved there, and there were six thousand when I left, and it was a wonderful place. And we didn't have all stacked and packed there, and we were all on septic tanks. And when I came to Wairega and looked around for a house, I fell in love with this house because I had acreage and I was not stacked up against my neighbor. I had freedom where my neighbor wouldn't bother me and I wouldn't bother my neighbor. So this is my concern about that. So going back to my original question, can we, do we have to adopt everything that's on this? Can we just have to do the ten that's required and leave all the rest of them? Because what I'd like to see, and that's what what happened to me in the little town of Clayton, is we had local control. And I would like to maintain as much local control as possible. I'm not against more people moving in. I'm not against additional housing, but I'm, I am for local control because we know better than these people in COGS or in Sacramento, how we want to live and how we live and how we want to live in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Join to get all her questions noted. All right. Thank you. All right, next.
Good evening. My name is Jan Osborne, and I want to say Debbie and to Louise for their comments because they pointed out some things that now I won't have to say all. Though I will remind you of previous comments that I have made about how the governments in all our states. Well, I don't know if all of them right now, but quite a few have done away with single family zoning. So that uh we don't have any rights really to control what's happening in our neighborhood. And they're doing this by saying it's all by right. Look at S B nine, S B ten, and these things that say you can have accessory dwelling units and all of this on your property. Well, that's by right. That means you won't get a notice from the planning department and have a voice to say, uh, I want public hearing. I'm opposed to that in my neighborhood and give your reasons. That's gone. You don't have that. About the only point that we have or part that we have left is our vote. And this housing element under program H E one point three point six looks to repeal Article thirty-four of the California Constitution, which was passed in nineteen fifty and which said that if an entity, a city wanted to build low income housing, it had to go to a vote of the people. That's about the last say we have. We don't have anything with our zoning now. And Julianne explained it very well. I mean, government regulations, we have to do this. They pass this at the government. This wasn't Wairega doing it. Wairega is just following along because they can't fight City Hall, so to speak. But um, this program, H E one point three six, is to repeal Article thirty-four of the state constitution. And I've explained what that was about. There have been three prior attempts to repeal this. Because fortunately, it was three times, people were still interested in having a say in what's going to happen in their communities. But in this one, this is one of the programs in our housing element. The city, that's Wairega, will support and actively lobby for state and or local initiatives and referendums that seek the repeal of Article thirty-four of the state constitution. Should the state or local initiatives or referendum, referendums fail to progress or pass, the city shall initiate an Article thirty-four initiative that if passed by a majority of qualified voters, would allow the city to read it, to develop, construct, or acquire low cost rental housing or to partner with nonprofit housing developers using state funding. State funding is grants and strings. Remember that. I am very opposed to having this in here. If we repeal, this would be the whole state of California, and here it says it's supposed to happen in twenty twenty-four, but I learned Juliana said it's going to be twenty twenty-eight, that this is going to be on the ballot. To me, it's ridiculous. I don't know how the city did this. If you all decided that you were going to repeal Article thirty-four, or if this is just something you're seeing for the first time, but I urge you at least take that out. That we're not in favor of repealing the people's right to vote, whether they want low income housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir. Come on down.
My name is Bill Schmidt. I have quite a few properties in town. I think this act is needs to go to the vote of the people. I think it's way too big for this council to handle. I think the people of the city need to make the decision. They need to be educated need to make the decision. They need to be educated on exactly what's going on all the way through it. I know the newspapers, what it said, it main focus was gee, we can get more grants. We can get points for for easier for getting more grants, more grants, more grants. That's all I've heard. I think this needs to go with the people as they vote. We need to bring it up to the people and the people in in Wairega because this will change the dynamics of Wairega so great. And it won't be reversible.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, I will allow it.
So when we were, when, when we were going to city council meetings all over the Bay area as a result of these plans, um, with Atherton, we had learned that the the city of Atherton, which if you know Atherton, it is super affluent. We're talking five, 10, 15 million, $20 million homes, Google employees. My former bosses from Google lived there and in their that area. Atherton had sold its regional housing, housing needs allocation to the city of Redwood City. Why? Because they didn't want their beautiful Atherton neighborhoods and homes to be mixed in with low housing, low income housing homes. They wanted to keep the pristiness and the, the, uh, the affluence of their neighborhoods. And so they remained Atherton very rich without the mixed use, without any of that. So I just want to throw that out there. That there's a reason why people are saying, wait, we don't think we like this, but.
Okay, thank you. summary.
Then I'll just comment more question. Um, I want to clarify. How much of this is state law and how much of this is us doing this? And then in that, if we decide that we are going to do that and ask for grants, is there any possible way we can say, no, we don't want this part of that grant? And scratch it out and not agree to it. So that's what I'm wondering. How much of this is us and how much of this is the is the state? Cause we need housing. I mean, we've got 2,000 people in this town, more than we had before the fires. And that's what people don't realize. They're couch surfing, they're hanging out with friends, they're borrowing trailers, they're parking them in cars. They're out there on that hill over there. Families down Deer Creek, families need housing. But at what cost? That's what we need to.
Yeah, that Juliana. Okay. Maybe also public comment. And Emily, do we have anybody online? I forgot to ask you earlier. We have anybody with their hands raised? Okay. Okay, I will close public comment and then what I will do is go to uh, our council members for questions. So Juliana can note those and then come down and answer everybody's questions at the same time. Okay, so I will open up to our council members. I'll go to Councilman Davis for questions and direct them to Juliana. Any questions?
Maybe if I roll through these questions, you might have the same.
I thought it'd be easier just to answer everybody's question at the same time. Right? So I mean, you can say public comment questions and then then you can answer the the councilman questions after that. That way it's a bigger one shot. All right, you're up.
Juliana, I, I kind of feel like once we start doing this, it's a kind of a slippery slope that sometimes our community may uh, end up being more low income housing than uh, regular housing. Um, and you see that that happening or is, is this just something that I'm perceiving?
You just note that down and welcome. Thank you. That'd be easier. That's it. Okay, Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. I just need a second to put together my thoughts actually.
Actually, then we'll come back to you and I'll go to Councilman Keg.
What 10 points are you talking about? What 10 points?
Things outlined, she said she spoke.
The bear. Oh, it was, okay. Yeah, I didn't get 10 points, but I mean, I can summarize what our conversation was. Yeah. Oh, you want me to go through all 10 of those?
I, I think I can, I can summarize this. Essentially, Ms. Gliado pointed out that she feels like there's 10 action items, programs that have state mandate by having the bear next to them. And Ms. Gliado's question is, is technically, can we just remove everything else that doesn't have the bear and essentially just submit that as a housing element? Thereby gaining more control?
I, I got it now. I, I get. Okay.
Okay. Pro Tim McCoy. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, I have just a couple of quick questions. Um, what, when people approach me on the street? What, for whatever reason, the only thing that they're getting out of this document is low income, low income, low income, low income. Now, I, I wanted to ask a question again, um, and I was looking for it in here and I know it's in here, but it'd be quicker with you. Can you go back through the three or four income levels? And the reason I ask that is because if I were to start teaching tomorrow again, I would not be low income, but I would be one step up from low income in the state of California. That's moderate. That's I would be making about $36,000 a year. That's what the average teacher makes when they start teaching. And so that's why I wanted you to kind of go into that. And I don't consider, I, I was 23 years at Jackson Street and I didn't consider any of my teachers to be, my new teachers to be, you know, any less of a person because they were only making, at the time, they were making 29 to 30. When I started, I made 13 in 1981. So that's why I want to know. Thank you. And, and to trying to spill, if there, if we can dispel the myth, because again, everything I'm hearing, what's being pulled out of this in the city is that we're going to just cater to low income, low income, low income, low income. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Councilman Baker, are you ready?
Thank you. I, I appreciate the, uh, the time to put my thoughts together. Um, because, uh, a few weeks ago, when we talked pro housing, I just, um, felt like I just could not even put a sentence together and that's kind of how I'm feeling tonight. But, um, I actually, um, echo the concerns of what I've heard here tonight is the loss of local control. And, um, as I study this document, I am still, um, I'm still studying it. And, um, I'm still attempting to determine what's mandated and what's added in. And if the things that have are not mandated, um, how they support the mandates. Um, and so I feel a little jostled in my mind right now. Um, so that's the only comment I have right now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Baker. I guess the only comment I have is that I think things have changed quite a bit from when we're talking low income to moderate income levels. Because, I mean, I wouldn't call people making, and there's a lot of people here that make under $26,000 a year. I would consider that almost poverty. And so the next step is our, I wouldn't call it low income. I would call it the working class housing. So I think that step is kind of missed now. And I guess the terminology is lost because it's actually affordability for our working class who make 36 to 55, $60,000 a year. Cause you do have to make that to even buy a house in the city of Wairega now. And, um, I don't know how some of the people out here making $18, $18, $19 an hour. You know, as many people know, I'm in the real estate business. You rent an apartment now, minimum of 900, 950, and it goes up from there. I have clients renting their houses, three bedroom houses for 1600, 1800, 1500. You get a little two bedroom that used to be 700 back in the day. And they're 1150 a month in the Campbell Track area, which used to be a based farm, low income housing development. They're getting 1150, $1,200 for a two bedroom house. So it's, um, it's disturbing to me that the people here who want to live here that are working can't afford a house to buy, making $40,000 a year, 50,000. And, um, so I think it's lost in the shuffle. So that's what I kind of agree with that. Pro Tim McCoy, the, um, they think it's low income that we're catering that that's going to be all these people just paying 50 bucks a month for a rent or something, but I don't know what the answer is to let them know that this is actually working class. And businesses and companies are coming to us saying, you know, we're paying 2350 an hour, $24 an hour. There's no housing there. No matter what the cost, there's no housing here. And, um, and we want people to be gainfully employed and we want to have a vibrant housing market and we want to see our shops thrive back in the days. Um, Debbie talked about when our logging was here and things were booming and you know, um, will we get there? I don't know. Maybe not, maybe. But we've got to have somewhere for them to live to be here. So that's my only comment. And I'm going to go back to Juliana to answer our public and our councilmen's questions or concerns. Thank you.
Yeah. So I got a little confused with the 10 because there isn't, there are actually total of 16 programs specifically that address state mandates. There's a table on page two dash one that outlines all of them. So you don't have to search through chapter two. Um, so I think one of the things to bring up with all of this, it may be very overwhelming is how we set up the goals, policies and programs of these elements. And so this will be the same for every single element we go through with the general plan. And so we start with an overarching goal. It's a very open ended accommodate the city's share of regional housing needs for all income groups during the planning period by ensuring an adequate supply of land for residential development, for an example. That is required. We have to do that. So the, the programs under it that have the bear show we are trying to meet that goal. That is a state mandated goal. We have to do with our, our Reno allocations. Which Rena is the regional housing needs allocation. Um, I'm going to get better at acronyms. We have a policy statement under that. It's a statement regarding that goal and a, and, and different pieces. So again, it's, this one is just the example. Ensuring Wairega provides adequate sites with appropriate zoning and available public facilities and services to meet the city's share of the regional housing needs. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that is a state mandated policy. And so that, that program under there with the bear is under all of those. And so it may be a little confusing that we don't have the bear next to all the goals and policies as well. But if there is a bear under a goal, that goal is required as well. So there's, I mean, it may be a little confusing for people, but we can go back through and add that bear to, to everything. But it would be also again, probably overwhelming because not a lot, it doesn't have a requirement. So, uh, I just focused on the programs because those are actionable programs that we're proposing to do in the next eight years. So those are kind of the more on the ground specific things. They have requirements for timing, but how we're planning to fund this administration. Um, on the topic of grants, if you go through the actual element, it has funding identified there. And yes, we do have an appendancy with grant options in there. Um, but as you'll see here, program HE 1.2.1 funding, general fund. That is your general tax revenue paying for that program. And so we do happen to have that in here. It does vary throughout the whole, um, list, um, but we did put that down. So going through whatever you adopt, you follow that. Now it is not a static document, it's a dynamic document. And so as we move through this, one of the biggest things that we have in here is we have a number of zoning code updates we need to do and they're identified here in the programs. Once we accomplish those, we can open this document back up and amend it. So you can amend this document after you adopt it. This cycle is important for this adoption timeline to meet statutory requirements because you need to do a full update. So annually, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, can we not have talking in the audience? It's hard to hear her answers to your questions. So no talking, please, back and forth.
So the, the city is allowed to update its general plan four times a year with an optional five for private people who want to petition the city to do that. So you can do it no more than once a quarter. So if you really wanted to, you can update this every quarter. Once we get this one adopted. Um, and again, you can take out all of the optional programs if you want. Um, I will tell you, a lot of these are based off of the feedback we got from your residents. We got this feedback from your employers. And so, you know, again, that is your choice as an elected official, whether you want to listen to your general public or not. Um, but again, we have these in here based off of requests and information that we receive from your public outreach. So that is, and I can even go through and identify why we recommended certain programs. But for example, page two dash eight program HE dash 2.1.4 is about the small and large employer housing being allowed in CPO, C2, CH and CT zones. We have had a request for employee housing and having more flexibility for some of our industrially and commercially zoned properties. For example, as we're seeing the suburban propane lines go through the city, they do not have anywhere for their workers to live. They cannot afford to put them up in a hotel for the entirety of the job. And so they were illegally living on a commercial property in RVs. We do not currently allow that in our zoning code, so I have to enforce that. And so I've heard that individual, as well as multiple other state, we need to have more flexibility for people who are coming in, doing construction projects. So that is why we have recommended that program because we have had people directly request that type of program. Uh, one of the things I'd like to also state, I know there was a concern over R1 zoning. There is only one program that mentions it. It is a state mandated program. And it states group homes operating as a single family residence that provide licensable services to more than six residents are subject to a conditional use permit in the R1 and RA zones. So that would still require public hearings. That would, that is a state mandate. If they have less than six people, they are allowed by use by right, right now. And you actually have several group homes in your community in your R1 zone. And they're licensed and everything. Um, so again, that is the only program in here that mentions R1. And it's about requiring conditional use permits. So I, I don't want to take away your public hearings. Most, if not all of the by right mentions is for housing flexibility in commercial areas to have more mixed use development. So for example, there is a vacant lot across from Walmart. We have actually had that property owner ask several times over the years whether they can do a mixed use development, which would include commercial and apartments on the second and third floor over in that area. And so that is basically what people are asking for. So the other thing too, is we do have several programs in here, page two dash three, starting with your optional programs. There are two programs on there that are optional for you. We're recommending those based off of the feedback we got from our developers, which is we would like to save money and time. And so these two programs have information in there to get there about fast tracking applications, about by right um, applications in your high density residential zones and your commercial zones. So again, not touching your R1. Not, not touching those. Um, several others. Oh, this other one that I actually really like. Um, this one is a voluntary rezoning program will be done as part of the general plan update. This rezoning program will have two categories for sites identified in the inventory. So part of this is we are working on a site analysis of vacant and underutilized commercial and industrial properties. And we want to be able to offer them the opportunity free of charge to rezone those properties if they so choose. That is giving you local control. That is giving your local property owners the ability to rezone if they so choose. They do not have to. It's not mandating that we do. It's mandating that the city do this program. Uh, one of the other things we did place in here as well is part of our zoning code update, we're going to be sending two rezoning letters or zoning code update letters to every single parcel owner in the city, basically asking them, how would you like to be zoned? So there'll be a letter at the front end that says you. So there'll be a letter at the front end that says you have a general plan designation of X. These are the optional zones within that, which one would you like? And we will take that to Planning Commission and yourselves for you to actually see this is what people have asked for. And at the end of the process towards the end, we will give them another letter stating this is what has been tentatively assigned to you. If you would like to come to another meeting and say you do like it, you don't like it, we will give them another chance to do that as part of the process. We have not done that ever. So that's giving the property owners the ability to have influence in their decision-making process. So go- going back through. Um, there's some kind of misinformation about Article thirty-four. Article thirty-four is concerned with rent control and rent stabilization programs in California is currently constitutionally not allowed. And that's pretty typical for the United States. What the program that was mentioned earlier on page two dash six, which is Program HE dash one point three point six. Is merely the city lobbying for the state to put an initiative on the ballot for people to vote for. So we're not trying to necessarily overturn Article thirty-four. It would be great to have rent control as a tool. But this is basically advocating for local voters to vote on the initiative. And if the state is not going to do it, or if it fails at the state level, to give your local jurisdiction the ability to vote on whether you want to do it or not. Now, you can take that program out, but that's literally the intent of the program is to say, we want to give people the ability to weigh in on if they want rent control or not. Because right now, your state government tells you you cannot do it. So, that is up to you, if you want to take that out or not, but that is literally the purpose of that, is to open up that if you would so choose it to. After review, as we brought up before, allowing more flexibility and repurposing vacant commercial property, that is literally a direct public comment. Um, I will put you on the spot, Lorenzo, that is actually from Lorenzo Love at one of our, uh, meetings and actually caught on, and a lot of people really like the idea. So we included those programs. So you can take your optional programs out, but those optional programs were placed there because of the feedback we got from your residents, your employers. And you and the Planning Commission as well. So just stating that's why those are there. You may take every single one out. It makes my job very, very easy if I don't have to do anything else besides meet state code. That is very easy for me. I can do that and get paid. Very nice. So Regional Housing Trust Funds, I think to start on this, uh, a housing trust fund is not regional. It can be regional, it does not have to be regional. So a housing trust fund is basically a governmental or nonprofit entity. That has a consistent amount of funding for housing projects. Now, housing trust funds are popular throughout the entire United States. There are sixty-some-odd ones in Iowa, and I have experience with a couple of them there. Some of them focus on affordable housing, some of them focus on weatherization programs, which basically takes your older house, gives you some new windows. So it really kind of depends on what you want to do with it, but it is a tool that you can use if you so choose. So it does not require you to be regional, although a lot of small cities in rural counties tend to have a county run or a joint powers authority. So you have JPAs here in, uh, Siski County, uh, your solid waste is done through a joint powers authority, which is a representative. From every single one of the jurisdictions, including Siski County. So you could theoretically have a housing trust fund run through that type of agency. But the purpose of it is, is collecting consistent funding to pay for housing projects. Um, you don't have to do it if you don't want to. It is just another tool that you can use moving forward. So, uh, right now, so to clarify the additional sewer water program. It is not there to mandate anyone to connect. We need to adopt a policy saying we don't discriminate units based off of income level. Or if they're de-restricted, that's what that means. So, but I do have to state right now, in our current municipal code, if you are in within, if you are within city limits. And you're within a certain distance of a sewer mainline, you are required to connect to that mainline. That is a current municipal code section. We do not have the same code for city water. City water we have as an option, you may either, uh, connect to the system. Or you may have a well. If you go and get a well, you will go through the county. We do not permit wells. It goes through them, but we get an option. So again, if you want to keep your septic, that's fine. Um, there needs to be code changes if that's something you want to do. And you're within a certain distance of a sewer mainline. I believe it's three hundred feet, but I could be wrong. It's usually, usually either two hundred or three hundred feet there. So that new program does not require anyone to connect. It just says we are not going to discriminate connections based on affordability. Um, I think I covered Article thirty-four. Um. Accepting grants in pieces, so again, if you don't want to do a program, we're not going to go for a grant for it. So if you go for certain grants for certain programs, you have to accept and go forward with that grant as the work plan is proposed. Or later, if there need to be amendments, you do that there. Um, so you can't really accept grants in pieces, and so I may have misunderstood your comment after that. Um, but basically, every time we go for a grant application, we take it in front of city council and ask you if you would like to go do that grant. And here's the project we're proposing. If you don't want to do the grant or do the project, you don't approve the application. So those are reviewed every single time they come to you. Um, the only grants I don't, actually, I think we even do bring CBBG here. So there's the Community Development, Community Development Block Grant Program. That's one of the largest grant opportunities that we have for police services, code enforcement, animal control. Um, buildings, uh, different infrastructure projects. That is a very, very large one, but even that one, we're, we're required to publicly notice. You have to approve whether we move forward with it or not. So there are checks and balances for that if you don't like a grant applying to. Uh, low-income housing focus, so again, we did not focus on low-income housing. We focus on workforce housing. And we use that word specifically because we are trying to meet the needs of our employer and employers within the city. So we're focusing on what their employees make. And so again, going back through. So the income levels, depending on the number of persons per household, um, we have it all the way up to eight. We have a very lovely table. It's Table A seven on A dash fourteen of the document. It has a whole big thing outlining what that means. So right now, if you are just a single person in a household, you are considered in the extremely low income category. If you are making sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars or less. You are in the very low income category if you're making sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars to two, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. You are considered, oh, I apologize, that's this. Okay, here we go. So extremely low income group is those making less than twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars a year. Very low is twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-five to two, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. And this is on page A sixteen of your, your, uh, documents. Those making twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars to thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Moderate in is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. To fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and those who are above moderate income are, are fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars or more. So those are the income levels. We're actually advocating for all of those. And so, uh, for example, we did have a breakdown as of twenty nineteen, thirteen percent of our households at that time were in the extremely low. Seven percent of our households were in very low. Eighteen percent of our total households in twenty nineteen were in the low income category. Twenty percent of your households are in the moderate, and forty-three percent are in the above moderate. And so one of the things we talk about with our housing consultant when we're looking at future developments is we're looking at what we call a mixture of income units. So we're looking at market rate, moderate, and low income. So we want to prioritize all of those above. Um, one of the things to note is that we do have the Siski Crossroads Project, which is going to be a fifty-unit, twenty-four going to supportive housing. Twenty-four are, or sorry, twenty-five are going to low-income housing. And so the only thing you have to do in the eight years is you have to build three units. One in low income, one in very low income, and one in extremely low income. Transitional housing can count for your extremely low income category. So once the Siski Crossroads breaks, or opens its doors, you will already have met two, if not all three, of your required RENA units. So that is the minimum. So that is what the state has told you that you need to meet, and that is based from the Department of Finance's estimate on birth rates. And so it is not a system we typically like to use. It's not my favorite system because I don't think it's indicative of actually what's happening in your community. Which is why we went out to ask people, realtors, property managers, what is actually happening. Um, because the state currently thinks that you're shrinking, um, which I don't think is necessarily true based off of the allowable resources, land prices. You have water, um, that's going to be a big thing in the next coming years. Um, again, Siski County, I think, is going to see a lot more development pressure than three units per jurisdiction. Uh, one thing to note is we are not part of a, a council of government. We're not in a cog. So a cog did not determine our RENA number. So we are part of Siski County, which is not part of a cog. So when we get our state allocation from the Department of Finance, Siski County doles out the RENA numbers. And so based off of the Cycle Six, um, Siski County doled out an equal number of units to every single jurisdiction. So every jurisdiction has the same number in Siski County because we had such a low number. Um, but again, if we were in a cog, they would run it. We are not. So it is, it, it depurs to Siski County to make that determination. So, uh, Angela Davis actually wrote a memo who du- that did that for the Cycle Six. So we can pull that up. If you'd like to look at it, it's like three pages and just says, everybody gets an even spread. Um, but that is determined that way. We do mention council of governments in the introduction of this document, just to state that the RENA numbers come from the state. They're doled out to regions or counties, and then they come to the local jurisdictions to explain the, how those numbers are sold out for us. So, that being said, um, well, I did blow up. Uh, there's a really nice, uh, document from the Institute of Local Governments. Uh, on what housing trust funds are. If you're really interested, I have a PDF for it and you can take a look at it. Um, it's not a specific thing. Um, there's a lot of different ways to do it. So if people are super curious and researching that, I have that available. I don't want to read through all that. Um. Yeah. That, I think, was all of the questions. Um, it was kind of a little difficult sometimes getting through to see what was a rhetorical question, what was actually a question. Um, but I think I hit most of them at this point. Unless you have something that I did not hit. And we do have Michelle on the line as well, and she may be able to fill in a little bit more if we need it.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Juliana.
I did forget, there are two programs in here for preserving housing units, even though that is like a general goal of HCD. It is not mandated to preserve your housing units, um, but you do have an older housing stock. And so we have two programs that are optional on page two dash seventeen to do, uh, housing condition surveying on a frequent basis. And then create and manage programs to help, uh, houses that have a very low, um, what we would consider a. Um, are at risk of condemnation and to provide programs for them to help them not be condemned. Um, and to contact the property owners to understand the circumstance. Um, some people may be on fixed incomes or may not have the physical ability to take care of their homes anymore. And so we do have programs in here to outreach to those individuals and help them take care of their houses. There is also a code enforcement section of that, but we like to do both incentives and citations when we're doing preservation of units. Because again, you don't know what the person's circumstances, and they could just maybe be on fixed income and not have enough income to fix up their house. So we want to be sensitive to what the needs of those people are.
All right. Thank you, Juliana. Um, Michelle, are you still online? Michelle?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Sorry.
This is Mayor Middleton. I will give you the last word on the, this agenda or this, um. Public comment and open forum. So do you have any comment you would like, would like to make?
No, I, I just want to express my appreciation for, um, the folks who took time out of their day and evening with their family. Um, and friends to, um, provide input to the council and to, um, to, to inform this process. And thank you for the thoughtful input from the council and the thoughtful questions from everybody. So. If I'm available for questions if, uh, need be, but I think Juliana covered everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. All right. Um, this will be back next month for approval from the council. So, um. With everybody, if they still have questions and homework, to please contact Juliana.
Just really quickly, we are accepting public comments still through February seventh at four P M. Um, there's three different ways that you can comment. Again, we have the comments from tonight. We're going to go back through the recording and make sure we have all of those. Um, as succinctly as possible. Um, there, you can also bring your written questions and comments into City Hall, email me. Um, all of that information is on our website, as well as the Waireca General Plan twenty forty-four webpage. So we are accepting comments still until February seventh at four P M. Um, we have the cutoff at four because our meeting starts at six-thirty, so we want to make sure we get everything together. Um, and be able to address any other further questions we may get through this process.
All right. Thank you, Juliana. So, um, council members, like I said, they have questions, to please contact Juliana and also the public. Until February seventh, she'll, she's open to answer any questions you may have. Um, you know, just to. Some of the council members weren't aware that our, um, Planning Commission approved at five to zero the other night to move forward on the plan. Um, with no questions or changes to the, um, plan. So, all right, thank you, and I'm going to, um. Appreciate everything you've done. Thank you, Michelle. All right.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I will move on to. Yes, public, kind of skipped around here. Public comment follow-up. This is time for city council or city manager to respond to public comments. Or my direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. Okay. And for seven, Mr. Leberty, maybe special presentations or announcements?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This is Councilman McCoy. The point in time count is tomorrow. I know we have some people already in the chamber that are involved, both here and out in the chamber. We appreciate that. If anybody is interested in getting involved or wants to know about it, uh, please feel free to see, um. Former Mayor Dwayne Kager, myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Portem McCoy. Okay, with that said, I want to thank you all for coming and giving us your input and questions, and we have a lot of homework to do. And with that said, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.